Good afternoon and welcome to the August 18, 2020, meeting of the Glendale Authority.
Excuse me, I guess I have to start, and later will be housing.
Oh, really?
Housing will be afterward.
No one told me that.
That's right.
That is correct. The special meeting goes first at 2:00 PM, as the mayor stated, and the housing authorities at 2:30.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry for that. Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the August 18, 2020, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from Allen County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable charter and Spectrum Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-80100. Please don't call in advance of the agenda either. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Achemian?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agadjanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Achemian. Next item, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, August 18, 2020, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Tuesday, August 11, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if we can have Mr. Achemian read the rest of the items into the record.
One would be community development regarding art and entertainment district, retail units, one motion providing direction on strategy for city-owned commercial space located at 117 to 131 Artsakh Avenue, two motion authorizing to proceed with short-term pop-up retail program.
Thank you, Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mayor Agadjanian, members of the city council, good afternoon. We are here this afternoon to seek direction from the city council as it relates to the city-owned commercial space that we have on Artsakh, and it's located between 117 to 131 on Artsakh.
Ms. Haramoto is here to provide the report, and there's a PowerPoint that you should have before you as well as on the screen. Ms. Haramoto?
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am very excited to be giving this presentation to you today, and in part because we have discussed the future of Artsakh Avenue now for several years, and at the heart of the conversation is the future of the retail districts. Over the past months, we have most recently provided an update on what to do with Artsakh Avenue, and the last presentation was back in December. And with each presentation, each milestone, we have spoken collectively with passion, enthusiasm, creativity, and above all, optimism about what the future of the art and entertainment district could be. And at the core of that are these eight city-owned units. So as Ms. Beers mentioned, the purpose today is to discuss both the long-term and the short-term vision for these units, and we'll quickly go into the background, followed by a presentation by the Maxima Group, Patricia Flynn, who's on the phone and prepared a real estate assessment of these units, and to go in with a short-term strategy. So, quick background, the art and entertainment district was first detailed in the downtown specific plan, and generally extends from Central Avenue, excuse me, Central Park to Alex Theater, with the heart of the district along Artsakh Avenue. Through the city council direction, we have engaged with Studio 111, and the plan has been to build upon what we first started with the A&E district, and we created the Artsakh Biseo, which has been proven to be a very popular amenity, especially during COVID times, and really refocus the efforts in the A&E district by activating Artsakh through things like bumped-out sidewalks, public art, and really just make it more pedestrian-friendly. Back in December of 2019, which is the last time we went to council on this item, the recommendation was to pursue a retail study to get an understanding of the highest and best use of these retail units. The image you see before you is one of the renderings that was prepared by Studio 111, and the area that is in the red circle here, these are your retail units. And you can see that when construction commences, when this is completed, it will have more flex seating, overhead shade elements, other lounge seating, and a play zone. And again, this is an area that, as we look at those future of the units, it is not just these thousand-square-feet units, but it really is the outdoor area, and this can be part of the consideration as you look for the longer-term tenants at these spaces. When we hired the consultant, it was through Estelino Advisors and Maxima Group. Their role, their scope, was to take a look at the highest and best use for our retail units in order to, one, exemplify a vibrant and thriving A&E district, and this is something that has been consistent throughout this whole conversation as we re-envision the future of Artsakh Avenue. And the second is to provide a source of revenue for the city. We currently have paying tenants in these units. This can continue to be a funding revenue or a revenue source for us, but there may be other attributes that we're looking for as we consider the perfect tenant for these spaces. So, the question at hand here, and it should be 131 Artsakh Avenue, excuse me, but we have these eight units, 117 through 131. They're generally 9,000 square feet in total, total of eight suites. We have three tenants, which are Aratu, Lenardi, and DEA Skincare. Each are paying tenants, and the other units are vacant. We have recently started to do some tenant improvements in those units in anticipation that we would have this conversation one day to quickly re-tenant those spaces. And if you recall, part of the reason that this conversation is so exciting, at least for me, is these units have been tied up with the former redevelopment agency, and when the state eliminated redevelopment, the city was required to come up with a plan to dispose the property. Originally, the intent at that time was to sell the property through an auction, but as council started to re-envision the options for Artsakh Avenue, council opted to change course and ultimately decide, let's take fate into our own hands and ultimately be in charge of what types of tenants we see in those spaces. So, our hands have been tied. We have been unable to enter into any new leases in these units, and today is really a milestone of a conversation for us as we talk about the options that we have at hand. And again, the intent through this conversation is not so much to talk about the specific tenants that we want, but really to talk about the collective vision. What types of uses does the council want to see in these spaces? Would you prefer to take on things such as having the retail units preserved one by one, or do you want to have them all combined into one? And so, these are things that, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, okay. I just want to remind us, we have three tenants, and the space is 9,000 square foot. So, let's say if eight of them are 1,000, then one of them should be another 1,000 approximately, right?
Yes, so we have in total, it's the eight units. So, some of them are a little bit larger, such as 1,200 to 1,300 square feet.
So, entire space is eight units?
Correct, yes.
And so, the five of them are not occupied at this moment, right?
Correct.
So, but was occupied before? When was occupied, all the stores? When was the last time that all the stores were occupied?
It would have been between 2011 through about 2014, and one by one, as redevelopment was dissolved, some of the tenants started to move out. So, since about 2014, we have started to see fewer and fewer tenants there. And these are the three tenants that you do see, Aratu, Lenardi, and DEA Skincare. Those were, these are the remaining three from the leases that were negotiated long ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to Patricia Flynn. She is a real estate consultant, principal and co-owner of the Maxima Group, who can get into more detail about the report that is in the attachment as you look for the long-term strategy for this property. Patricia?
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, everyone, for coming to hear this. We were really intrigued when we first met with the team from the city and started talking about Artsakh and its potential uses. And at the time, there were a lot of really big questions being asked. So, it's, as Jen said, it's a 9,000 or so square foot area, and the big questions were, what should we put here? You know, what use, single use or mix of uses is best suited to this space? Should there be a lot of tenants, or should there just be one or two larger tenants? And based on whatever strategy is appropriate, what sort of capital investment will be required, and what can we expect in a way of market rate performance and the general economics of that? So, today, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we did, come to our conclusions, the conclusions we came to. I'm going to be addressing more of the long-term strategy, and then Jen is going to talk a little bit more about the short-term strategy. So, when we started this work, the first thing we did was look inward. We went to Artsakh, we experienced it during the day. I made some trips there at night. We looked at the surrounding area and immediately noticed that it had, it's very central, it's a key part of the art and entertainment district. It's very central to what we're calling cultural anchors, and these are mostly performing arts venues, such as the Alex Theater, Antaeus Theater, and Cinemas. So, it's very strategically located, and pedestrian street has just a really lovely, authentic look and feel, and that's a very precious thing and something we immediately identified as something we want to maintain and enhance. We looked at the interior of the space, too, because there are some constraints that are involved with the way the space is configured, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. So, that's the kind of the interior view. And then we also looked at exterior. What have other cities or jurisdictions done with similar assets in the context of arts and entertainment, because that context is really important to this asset. So, from those two elements of research, we then developed some screening criteria to evaluate potential uses. And from there, we then identified a leasing and use strategy and the estimated economics. And then we also noted some asset management things, considerations that need to be in mind for future success. Next slide? Okay, so, there's some really great aspects of the site. I've hit on some of them. The first is that it's owned by the city of Glendale. And when you have public ownership of an asset, especially a real estate asset, that means that you're not, you have the freedom to optimize its use both economically as well strategically. And that's really important because it allows you to do some things that as a private owner, you may or may not be able to do. The other great news is, there's plenty of parking, and that's often a key factor for retail uses. So, from that point of view, it's pretty ideal. There's a range of dining options in the area. You're adjacent to Brand Boulevard, and we say, just in general, Glendale is really becoming very much of a dining and food destination, and that was something we noted with interest. Now, on the other hand, these units in particular lack some access from the rear of the space, and that's a limitation for restaurant and food use, because you've got to get raw goods in in the morning, you have to get trash out during the day. It's not, it's not a fatal flaw, but it's just something that's going to have to be taken into consideration for if it uses or how you go. But it definitely favors smaller-sized units. So, again, going back to one of the early questions, do we want to have one or two big users, or do we want to have several small users? And the small users seem to be the way to go here. And we also liked what I'm calling the fine grain of the smaller users. It brings a lot of interest and diversity and different perspectives to the street, and we thought that was very consistent with and enhancing to the pedestrian nature of the site. Okay. So, based on our research and our thoughts about the physical asset, we put together some guiding principles, and this is important because circumstances can change, as we are all now experiencing, and I think principles help us stay focused on the values that we want to exhibit here. So, first of all, we want to enhance the existing uses, not necessarily repeating, but complementing. Because these are smaller units, we want to focus on destination tenants. And what I mean by that is, if you're a T-Mobile store, you want to be in a high-traffic area because you want, that traffic area is part of your advertising. This is more, we know about it, and we're going to go there. But whatever concept, of course, has to fit into the smaller space, because we think that's the way to go. And here's the key, all-day activation. We want a mix of uses here that will keep people coming to Artsakh morning, noon, and evening. And again, we think best alternative here is to focus on smaller, locally-based businesses. They're going to be a better fit for the space, and I think it establishes a destination much better than a single national brand. And then, because finishing out this type of space can be expensive, we're looking for something that's a little less capital-intensive, because that's something that has to be worked out in the economics. Okay, so, as we went through and evaluated the types of potential tenants, we got down to three basic groups: food-related uses, which you can see on the slide, artisanal uses, and arts-focused. And we think all of these types of uses are potentially a good fit for these spaces on Artsakh. And the slide, it's not my favorite, but it shows a grid, and across the top, you'll see the guiding principles that we established when we were reviewing potential users, and then along the vertical axis, you can see the potential users that we showed you in the previous slide. And this is just to see visually at a glance, what are the key characteristics of each potential use relative to the guiding principles. And our goal here is to make sure, again, that we're fulfilling, not every single potential use can fulfill all the principles, but the right mix of use can make sure that you've got everything covered. And the really key thing here, again, I want to keep going back to this, it's the concept of activation. So, I thought it would be useful for this discussion to talk about locally-based examples. Some of these are more relevant than others, but I just, by way of background, I'm sure many of you have been to visit these, but I just thought I'd call out some key characteristics. So, Anaheim is famous for the Packing House. This is a redevelopment of an existing historic building. It's pretty self-contained, 42,000 square feet, so quite a bit bigger than the space we have available on Artsakh. Interestingly, the average tenant size in this food hall is just about what the unit sizes are at Artsakh. So, there's a proven formula that works, but this large-scale, self-contained food destination is not really what we're dealing with on Artsakh. But the concept is parallel, let's say. Same thing with 4th Street Market in Santa Ana. It's very similar. Again, you go in for a whole mix of different food uses. Next slide? I don't know if anyone's been out to Redlands, but they have an alley called Orange Street Alley. This has more of the scale of Artsakh. It's smaller spaces, it's an alleyway, it's the pedestrian kind of environment. You can see the outdoor dining. It's gained a lot of notoriety for the umbrellas, because Instagram thing, but it has become a real favorite destination for Inland Empire and others who visit. And this, to me, has a little bit more of the scale of Artsakh. Again, the idea of doing improvements, crunching up the visuals, a very authentic texture of it, and this mix of smaller user. Next slide? This one, I don't know if anyone has been to visit. This is on Union Street in Pasadena. This is what they're calling the Food District, and I couldn't invent a better comp or comparable project if I had tried. So, this is literally almost identical space to what you have in Artsakh. I think there's between seven and nine units. They range, I think, from 500 or 600 square feet to about 1,000 square feet, 1,200 square feet. It's in the ground floor of a garage. It faces a secondary circulation street. It's not on Colorado Boulevard. They've got multiple different units there. I think there's a tea shop, there's a hot dog place. They're in the process of opening, so it's not fully populated, but they've made a lot of progress. Interestingly, across the street, there's a series of higher-end, larger-format restaurants, and they've now opened part of the street, as many cities have done, for outdoor dining. So, when you go down there now and you park in the garage, it has a really lively feel, even though everyone's socially distancing and doing all of the things that you need to do during COVID. So, this one is very, very directly comparable. Excuse me, I was encouraged to see that it's leasing up pretty well, in spite of COVID, tenant improvement work is going on. Oh, and I did want to, sorry, can we go back for just one second? I did want to point out on the slide here, this area is right around the corner. So, if you, if this young lady walked backwards and turned the corner, you'd be in this area. So, even though it doesn't face an alley, it has adjacent access to a pedestrian-only space. It's got lighting and all of the elements, some of the elements that we talked about from the Studio 111 report. And the thing that's interesting about this is, in the former Food District space, there was a store, many of you may have seen, called Goldbug. And Goldbug is a very unique, locally-owned store that's almost, has almost museum-like qualities, too. It's almost like a gallery. And they moved around the corner, and their storefront is now here on the pedestrian alleyway. So, now, they don't need the frontage of Union Street. They're tucked back in this alley, and when people come to eat, they're here, and they can see the storefront. So, it's a nice integration of both art and food as a destination. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so, talk about Artsakh. One of the things we found in our research is that for arts and entertainment districts is typically acres and acres or several blocks. This is only 9,000 square feet, so we felt it was really important to have some level of focus, and we chose food as kind of the main focus for this space. It's possible to have different food uses that will create the activation from morning to evening, and that was a goal that was really, really important to us. Connection to the outdoors is absolutely critical. The whole look and feel of the outdoor dining is really the authentic experience that we wanted to encourage, and I should say, these are all conclusions we reached in late January, early February. It's even more important now as we deal with COVID and the constraints around dining inside. Again, we wanted to keep everything as raw and authentic in a physical form as we could, and we want to make it also efficient. So, we haven't yet done a physical survey of the building, but there might be the opportunity for shared restrooms, a flexible outdoor seating policy. So, if one venue is experiencing a rush, let's say it's late at night, and there's a brew pub, that can spill out to as much of the outdoor seating as they require, and it's not cordoned off by tenant. Now, having said all of this, we recognize that anytime you have multiple tenants and you have a pedestrian environment, the management of the space is absolutely critical. So, events are very common. Orange Alley, for example, in Redlands typically has storytime for kids. They have yoga classes. They have all sorts of things that happen there to help attract people to this space and to the area. More tenants means more management. That's just a fact of life, but I think it's really, really worth it, because it can be very, very complimentary to the surrounding arts uses. And I think that you can use this space, I'm focusing on the long-term here, but we're going to very soon talk about the short-term. You can use this in an experimental way in the short-term to kind of test the mix of users and see which really suits the kind of look and feel that we want for this area. Next slide? Can we do the next one? Okay. So, the question now is, if that's the long-term strategy, and how do we move forward from here? And I think the first and most important thing is to, we need to get into the space with somebody who's knowledgeable about design and codes, and we need to inspect it in its as-is condition, get a sense of what any potential issues are, and start ballparking what's required to bring this concept to fruition, and how the improvements would come together, and what the relative costs of those improvements might be. So, that deals with the space, and then we have the actual filling of the space. So, there are some, it's really interesting. There's getting to be a whole bunch of brokers who are really specializing in finding smaller, more specialized tenants, which never used to be a thing, but now, the perception is that this is a market segment that really adds a lot of value. So, we would probably want to talk to some people who are familiar with that market, who understand who the up-and-coming tenants are, and then get some input about the design and other requirements to hit out the space. And then that will allow us to establish a more specific scope, budget, and schedule for how we would bring this along, including the building improvements and the improvements that are, have been discussed for Artsakh Avenue itself. Next slide? Okay, and so, I'm going to turn it over back to Jen here to talk a little bit about the short-term strategy.
Great. Thank you, Patricia. So, we'll just, we'll end in a couple of slides here. But, so, to recap, that is the long-term strategy, and there are steps that we can take now, as we have construction that is still about two years out before we start on the Artsakh Avenue redesign. So, as we continue to look for a set of perfect circumstances, the reality is that we could wait another two years before we do anything, or we can start and try something now. So, one of the things that we have, we've noticed is economic development has been approached by several unsolicited offers to temporarily occupy the space, and we've seen this in other cities where we could consider doing a pop-up retail program. These are the types of folks who have come forward. Again, this is improv and training, comedy training. Again, this is improv and training, comedy training, art studio gallery space, a real bookstore, expressed some interest, and this was several months ago, pre-COVID. I believe that we have some folks on the line as well today from the Armenian American Civil Support Center, who, nonprofit, who's interested in doing a gallery. McCurcheon Art Gallery, they are also interested in looking at this space for temporary use. So if council is looking at activating it in a short term, that is certainly something that we can consider. If we did do a pilot pop-up retail program, this is what it would look like. You would be supporting some of these small retail and cottage industry businesses through short term, no more than six months. Really, these are one to two ideally month leases. There would be a low to no cost fee to go in there in exchange for activation. So we would want them to see the space or the outdoor uses be activated. I will admit that when we came up with this wonderful idea, this was pre-COVID. So some of this may change, and if we would like to just hold off a few months to let COVID stabilize, that's something that we can also consider. But this would also give us a better understanding of the market type to help dictate the future retail uses, activate the vacant uses. Again, when you speak to some of the retail units out there now, they'll ask the city, hey, why haven't you filled up your retail units yet? Why are you letting the, the street be so dead? And we always respond, well, it's complicated. So this would enable us to at least to put some more life onto Artsoc, continue to experiment with alfresco. There is no better place in the city to do outdoor dining than the Artsoc Paseo. And if you've passed by it recently, you have seen that. The tables are full, and we can continue to take advantage of that. We can test some of these study recommendations, except for restaurants in there, those to do a pilot restaurant, that would be very costly, but perhaps there's another low-cost alternative. And finally, it would give us a chance to satisfy some of the ongoing community requests to use these units. If we do have retailers, for example, who have a product and they've wanted to try to sell it, this is another way to continue economic development locally. So this, this is an option, should the council wish to go down this road. As far as the, the next steps, here's what a timeline could look like. We could develop this pop-up retail program, and again, you're not necessarily signing off on specific tenants, but really you are providing a mechanism in which we can do a call for retail or retailers or potential tenants. It would be open and fair, and people can submit an application for a certain lease term in the next two years. We would also like to move forward on some of the recommendations by, by Patricia on the design review and some of the feasibility, then go into the tenant identification and the requirement analysis. I know there's also interest in the community, and they're wondering, why are we not tapping them yet for some more ideas on, on how to get artists into this space? They're, they're one step ahead of us. I think at this point, we're still just looking for the general direction from council on, do you like these uses, the general concept that we're presenting? Do you like this idea of doing the, maintaining the single uses versus larger uses? And then finally, you do still have your current tenants. What we would recommend is continue, we could revisit at a future date when the longer-term strategy is finalized. So we can come back to you in winter of 2020 even with a more vetted-out idea of what's feasible in those spaces, but at this point, there is really no need to renegotiate with any of the tenants at this time. So with that, that concludes our portion of the presentation. We're looking forward to getting some direction and ideas from council, and there are several alternatives here. We are most interested if you would like to move forward with doing the pop-up commercial program, and generally if you are interested in this longer-term strategy. So with that, I will conclude my comments and turn it over to council.
Thank you. Do we have callers?
Mayor, we do have two callers. Arlene, you're live, Arlene?
Oh, hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian, council members and city staff. My name's Arlene Vidor. I'm a Glendale resident. I really appreciate your focused dedication to the insane variety of issues you have to deal with at this time. But here we are, and specific to Artsoc, I'm kind of disappointed with the report attached to the agenda because I don't see anything boldly unconventional or imaginative. It's a formulaic template which reads kind of like a 1980s or 1990s, not a 21st century destination street. The plaza, as envisioned, will not enhance and complement what we already have in the adjacent Americana and On Brand Boulevard. And since we're in COVID crisis management mode right now, can we possibly stop and step back and reconfigure the process that we're utilizing, that we're utilizing to envision a new Artsoc? There has to be systematic collaboration between city departments, community stakeholders, and, of which there are many, and the types of professional consultants who have proven experience in developing artisanal and arts-focused, bold destination streets in an urban space like the one we're trying to develop. As a local example, last year, Brand Gallery partnered with Artsoc beautifully when elements of their exhibition Beyond Embodiment were integrated into the street during Tech Week. Brand Gallery got to leverage the central locale, and Artsoc and Tech Week benefited from the presence of Brand's sensational tech-oriented art exhibition. There isn't, or at least I could not find any mention of those types of forward-thinking partnerships in the report. And these are things that must work hand in hand with retail when the time comes to really ramp retail up. We have regionally and nationally prominent arts professionals in Glendale. Shannon Curry Homes from the Brand, Ara Oshigan Reflect Space, the gallerists of Tufankeen Fine Arts and Rosalyn, who need, and they need a bigger gallery presence in central Glendale to ensure their futures. And we have many residents here, Deborah Chetlier, who's a recognized arts leader, and others who lead the way in the greater LA area. They need to be at the table. There is very little elaboration here in the report on the importance of the arts and retail to one another, and the table on page seven is, is a bit confusing. The report mentions a makerspace also. How does the makerspace here on the street and the Central Library makerspace complement and enhance one another, or are they going to be redundant? I've seen Cars and Studio 11's reports. Did Maxima EA ever interact directly with the consultants from those firms? Retail, food, art, entertainment, street design, these cannot be created separately by different sets of experts. Only a multidisciplinary team will give us the Artsoc we dream of, and that is an audacious destination that captures people's imagination. You're all great. Everybody in the room and everyone who's spoken is talented and passionate about this, but we can't afford to work in silos and leave important constituents out of the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Rosmik, you're live, Rosmik?
I'm live?
Yes.
Go ahead, Rosmik.
You are on, Rosmik?
But there is, there is, there is somebody else talking ahead of me.
There's a delay.
Rosmik, there's a delay in the TV, so give it a second, but you can talk right now.
I'm on the online link.
Lower, lower the volume on your TV, Rosmik.
I don't have any volume on my TV. This is the online.
Okay, lower, lower the. Go ahead, Rosmik.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian. Good afternoon, Mr. Agajanian, honorable council members, city manager, and the city My name is Rosmik Gregorian.
We are waiting for you, Rosmik. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Rosmik Gregorian. I've been a commissioner in the city for about 13 years of arts and culture, and most of these ideas I've been an advocate. I saw this idea that are planning for Artsoc Street. That is a wonderful idea. I'm all for it, and I think that area right now is almost kind of half abandoned with some of the storefronts vacant, and I think temporary or permanent or longer, we should really try to get tenants there and revitalize that place. And I know for a fact that because of COVID, we might have a lot of uphill battles in there, but still, that area needs to be revitalized and be very active in arts and cultural activities. I was the one who negotiated the lease for McCurcheon Gallery in the past at 117 North Maryland Avenue at the time with the city. They were there. They did a wonderful job, many, many exhibitions, many quality artwork, and they were a gem in the community. And now the good news is that they want to go back their home, to their home, again at 117 North Artsoc Avenue now. They are ready to go there, and I would encourage the council members to consider this very seriously, and if there are other applicants, as the presenter was saying, maybe they could each get a separate space in that area, temporary even, six months, one year, whatever that is. But I would really like you to consider bringing McCurcheon Gallery back to 117 North Artsoc Street, and I would recommend the council members who may not be familiar with them, if you Google McCurcheon Gallery, you will see a lot of very nice, very vibrant exhibitions, hundreds of people showing up and really making that place a lively and active place. So I don't want to speak longer, and it seems that there is a communication issue here, but I would appreciate your input and your support for McCurcheon Gallery to come back home, either temporarily or at a long term, whatever later on you, honorable council members decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other calls, Mr.?
No, Mayor, that was the last one.
No, that was the last one. Okay, who wants to go first? Anybody wants to comment on this item?
Can you hear me? This is Jen.
Mr. Bratman.
I can, if nobody else wants to. So let's see, I mean, I, I think, you know, it's a good start, and I can see that a lot of hard work has gone into this, and thank you to EA and Maxima and to Jennifer and everybody. I do agree with Arlene Vidor and some of the, some of the other people that have written in that I just think it feels a little bit bland, and, you know, I like the idea of, you know, destination tenants, definitely. We want, we want to kind of have Glendale be on the map, and people are going to actually come to Glendale because they hear about this. But some of the things on there, like the juice bars, which somebody mentioned, you know, that's not a destination. You know, there are juice bars in, around. We have a couple of them, you know, within walking distance. Cafe, you know, if it's a very unique cafe, then maybe, but cafes are also kind of a dime a dozen. Like, I definitely wouldn't want to have any, anything like a, you know, a Coffee Bean or a Starbucks or anything like that, that's a repeat type of thing, but I, I don't think that's what you're thinking about. But anyway, just, just putting it out there. So, you know, definitely like the idea of these, you know, local, micro-type businesses. I like the, you know, mix of activations. So I think all that is great, but as I said, I think it feels a little bland to me. I would really like us to, to take some risk and be bold and be innovative. I think Arlene said audacious, that's a good word. I think every space should kind of be like, wow, that's cool, that's something unique. Definitely don't repeat what we're seeing, you know, on Brand and Americana. There's some, somebody mentioned something to me called Conflict Kitchen in Pittsburgh, which has like foods from different places where the US is involved in a conflict in that area. Now, I'm not saying we replicate that, but that's something that's provocative, right? And it would be kind of cool, you know, I don't know, we could have something else that gets people talking. And I, I like, as far as uses go, I mean, I like the mixture of food and, and live, you know, live entertainment. I'd love to have a little live jazz thing going, or maybe it can be a rotating music thing. We don't, I don't think we have any, like, jazz in Glendale, so, you know, that kind of thing. And let's see what else I want to say. I'm just looking for a list here. Yeah, I like, I like, you know, spilling out into the street, that's really, you know, that's really great. I do like, you know, the idea of galleries, like an, like an art gallery walk, you know, where you can eat a little bit and you could check out different galleries, maybe hear some music, maybe have a beer, some wine, cheese. Yeah, that, that to me would be, would be really fun, and the art would make it unique because it would be, you know, our local artists, if that's, you know, that would be our emphasis. So let me just look at what else I have here. Yeah, and, and I think the point that Arlene made about doing this holistically, I really do, I, I learned that the Arts and Culture Commission were not involved. People like, who did, who did you mention? Shannon Curry Homes from Brand, and we've got, you know, Ara Oshigan, we've got all these like really amazing people, and our, our Arts Commission is incredible. We've got, you know, now with Sue Bel Yank on there, and we've got really, really, you know, top-notch people. I'd really like to see them, I'd like to see this kind of, almost go back and re-look at it and do this in a collaborative way with the Glendale Library Arts and Culture, with the Arts and Culture Commission, and with some of these outside groups that are so dedicated to the arts in Glendale. So that's, I think, what I have to say. I may think of other little things, but that's, that's the basic message that I want to, I want to express. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, you want to comment on anything?
Yes, yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Patricia and Maxima. One question for you. Can you give me the address for that Pasadena Food District? I have not been there, and I would like to drive over and take a look.
Oh, okay, it's, it's on Union.
Oh, it is? It's on Union?
Yeah, it's the, it's the apartment structure that is, I think, the front of it's on Fair Oaks. So it's, it's from Union and Fair Oaks. It's on Union, just east of Fair Oaks.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah. It's worth, it's worth a walk around.
All right. I'd like to, I'd like to go there. I, first of all, I, I, you know, I agree with, with what's been said about this not being bold or audacious, but I don't know if that's where we are right now. I think right now what we're trying to do is decide if we want to do the pop-up, short-term rentals, commercial. I think if we want bold and audacious, maybe the brokerage is, and you want to get somebody from, you know, similar to a restaurant in Pittsburgh, I'll have to visit when I go home, but maybe that's where a brokerage comes in, where they can look, look for unique restaurants that will make Artsoc kind of become a destination. We all want to optimize, we have the same goals in common. We want to optimize the use. We want it to be diverse, and we want it to be interesting. I am definitely for a museum in that, in that area. I think it is arts and entertainment. We have a lot of arts surrounding it. I think we would be a nice anchor if it's the, is it the Merchant Gallery? I understand they were fairly successful, or very successful, when they were in that, in their, in their unit. So I think we should start it. This is all about testing, trying out, learning, finding out what works and what doesn't work in these. This is, none of this is cast in stone, right? Am I right, Jennifer?
Yes, absolutely, council member. The, the intent of this is, is really to get direction from council on some of these, the bigger vision ideas, and from there, so, for example, if you like those three main uses, the, the food use minus the juice guy, and the artisanal uses and the museum, so if we get consensus on those types of uses, in addition to direction on... in addition to direction on keeping the properties as the individual units versus merging them all in one, that's the type of feedback that we're looking for now, so that we can go and work alongside the construction process with Studio 111. And Commissioner Vidor is correct, Arts and Culture has and will continue to be an important part of this. And we have, in every, every step, we have gone to the City Council, received your feedback, and then gone back to the Commission and looked for their feedback as, as just part of the process. So they will continue to be an important part of that as well.
Well, yeah, because we, we need to have the, all the voices of all the stakeholders that are involved in this, the Greater Downtown Business Association should be involved. All of those stakeholders have to, have to be there. Let's see, what else did I want to say? Yeah, so I think we should start now. I think it has to be a little bit, it has to be different than the Americana and the Galleria. I mean, there's no doubt about it, it, it really has to have its own flavor, its own character. I, I think the artisanal, you know, Glendale has a lot to offer as far as artists and, you know, we have artists that do jewelry and paintings and all, all sorts of wonderful talent in our city, that would be a beautiful space there. And I've also, I had written down, there should be a time limit on, now, if we start this pop-up, that there should be a time limit on the rentals. And you mentioned six months might be the, and that's what I had written down. So I, I like that idea that they're in there for a while, we see how they do, see how well they're accepted, if they bring in residents and, and visitors to our city. So those are my ideas, my thoughts, and I say, let's do it now, let's not wait. We have, you know, we can do something now. There are ways of, of getting around the, the virus with social distancing and masks, and, and we should start now. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kusakian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you, Steph, for this presentation. I think, you know, the callers, both callers, had some good points. Obviously, it was the absence of McGurkian Gallery, which was right next to Urartu Coffee House, which I think is an anchor for at least one end of Urartu Artsakh Street. Its absence has been felt, it, it brought a lot to it. I would be of the mindset of trying to keep as many of the units separate and let the synergy and growth happen organically for Artsakh, experimenting and seeing what works and what doesn't, rather than trying to Frankenstein it ourselves as government officials and bureaucrats. Ultimately, the success is going to be reflected in the people who come and visit and who enjoy it, whatever amenities there are there. So in as much as we can be flexible with short-term leases, letting folks come in, see what survives and thrives, that will be the key. What we can do is obviously, in terms of the engineering and design of the street, to make it pedestrian-friendly, to make it friendly for people to come and enjoy the outdoors. I, I like the current configuration, but I understand that previous councils put a significant amount of time along with staff in studying as to how to make it a more transit or pass-through friendly, as well as a pedestrian-friendly area. So we'll give it a shot. I do want to say that in terms of what makes it unique, you know, we don't have to look any further than the name Artsakh. I think that, you know, when you look at what makes Glendale unique, it's the fact that it has a unique ethnic makeup and characteristic unlike any other place in the country and maybe the world, and we need to tap into that. You know, there is, anyone who has been to the Republic has been, had the good fortune of visiting the Republic of Armenia, there is an open-air market, not that far from Republic Square, called Vernissage, where people, it's part open-air art market, crafts market, swap meet, and it is very, very popular among locals and tourists. And Artsakh Avenue would lend itself, I think, perfectly for a use like that, maybe not every day, but at least periodically, or maybe a couple of times a year, as a place of congregation. So the types of uses, I think that you've listed are all fine, but really, I don't know as an council member which ones I can point to and say, this is going to work. Especially now, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff with COVID, and it's going to take some time to see which businesses come back and which ones don't. There was just an article the other day talking about how, in New York City, the highest rent market in the country, rents are falling because people are choosing to leave the city or not come back and work in offices, and those high rises that were previously teeming with people are now sitting virtually vacant because people realize that they can be productive from home as well. So I'm not saying that that necessarily will impact this, but we have to see what would necessarily work. Some juice bars may work, some juice bars may not. Some are different, you know, I know there's these fresh-pressed juice bars, like the ones in Outwater. I think one is even called Juice, that is very popular. And then there's your run-of-the-mill, like a Jamba Juice. I don't know if a Jamba Juice is what's going to work on that street. But whatever can happen, I think as was identified by staff and by the consultant, that's local, smaller, mom and pop, will help this area succeed. So I rely on you, the staff, as the professionals, to know how to attract those people. I think if you can secure an Abril bookstore there, that would be phenomenal. It would be great. But I don't know where Abril is today with its current lease. You know, Abril is also a place that has its adjacent art gallery, Roslin Art Gallery, with Sire Nyar Etsion, and I don't know where they're at. But something like that, the McGurkian, all of those would be great, a wine bar, whatever. We just have to see what works. And ultimately, the public will be the ones that validate our hard work.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. And thank you to staff and our consultant for doing this work for us. I, I pretty much am in agreement with the recommendations on the activation. So there's eight units, three of them are occupied currently. Presumably, they'll continue?
Yes, sir.
So at least five units. Why don't we all, each one of us pick a use? And the uses I'm thinking of, let me tell you, I like Mr. Kusakian's delving into something that brings out some of the cultural tie to Artsakh. Maybe a store, an art store that has, you know, can tie in Artsakh, the country, Armenia, the Republic, to Artsakh, the street, whether it's, and we've all seen the Armenian handicrafts, and maybe it can actually be, you know, directly from those two countries in which we have at least two sister cities in Armenia, and a strong relationship with Artsakh itself, that I think would lend itself to a, the artistic component as well as the retail component. The capital startup cost should not be too great, so there's not a lot of plumbing or anything like that that needs to be done. Artsakh is also famous for its mulberry vodka and other authentic drinks. I think it'd be kind of cute to have a shot bar, I'm not sure what the term is there, but a place serving those drinks. I understand that with the COVID, when the COVID ends, that they won't be able to take those drinks out, I presume. So the small size of the, the units may be a restriction on that. If you want to activate it, I can activate that for you with one store, one of two stores. Put in a little Porto's, just selling prepared sandwiches and some of their desserts to go, or a little Raffi's, even though Raffi's is, and Porto's are very much adjacent to those. I don't think they have that type of quick service. Get a little kebab sandwich from Raffi's. You don't want to sit down, put your name in, oftentimes there, there's a long wait anyway. Either one of those two restaurants, for example, would fill that place up incredibly quickly. I mean, if we want to get off the wall, I don't know if we have any tattoo parlors in Glendale, piercing salons, off the wall, okay? Oxygen bars? We're getting, talking off the wall here, right? We're not, you know, I guess someone said that we're a little too conventional in our outlook. What are those little cryo, cryo salons, where they immerse you in liquid nitrogen or something, and you get super cold, it's supposedly very good for the skin? Do we want to go that far? I'm not sure. But I think we need a mix. The point is, we need a mix. We need a good restaurant, I think we need maybe a good establishment for drinks, we need some art component. That already fills up three slots right there. So we're not dealing with a huge consortium of locations and sites that we're trying to fill. I mean, we're almost there, and I think all those perhaps give rise, are amenable to the pop-up, except maybe the cryo. You know what I'm talking about.
I'm not that hip.
There's a name for it, though. Beverly Hills has one, and people are lining up to get in there. I'm not sure Glendale is, would take to tattoos and piercings, but the city is changing. The city is definitely changing, so maybe that would be a popular site. But, you know, there you go. I mean, I think we should go for the temporary pop-ups, we should try and look for the ones that are going to bring visitors in. I mean, if you were to tell Raffi's or Porto's for low cost or no cost, we're going to give you this, this space, and if the word got out, you know, that Artsakh would be packed the next day, I guarantee you. And there may be other very well-known restaurants in town that are that popular that I'm not so familiar with, that could maybe fill that, fill that spot. So I think we should move, move ahead. This is temporary, this is temporary, we have to sort of remember that. And those that are in, and do succeed, and do bring that sort of energy that we're looking for, perhaps we'll be given a leg up at the time, at such time that we're ready to place a permanent business in. So that's.
Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing, since Mr. Najarian's, Councilmember Najarian's comments triggered something in my mind. You know, we, we had called that the Arts and Entertainment District, and it's been a long time coming and developing, and it'll go through a number of iterations. But one thing that comes to mind is, I recall hearing about how in Las Vegas, when the housing, the downturn happened, I think, you know, '07, '08, Las Vegas was not really known as a cultural destination, a high cultural destination in terms of music. I mean, you had the shows on the strip, but certainly not like the types of museums that were in the Bellagio. One of the things that Las Vegas did with a lot of the vacant housing that they did was, I believe, they had a program where they invited resident artists and writers to come and live in Las Vegas, giving them housing with the caveat that they would use their time in Las Vegas to write, produce, create, whatever. And slowly but surely, Las Vegas has carved a niche for itself. It has a very growing, a fast-growing art scene, in part thanks to that. You know, if we have vacant spaces and there is one available, we can have an artist in residence, have the Arts and Culture Commission hold, you know, call, put out a call for artists, select one, and have it rotate, and that person uses one of the spaces as their studio, you know, to create wall-on-Artsakh Street, whether it's a sculptor or a painter or whatever it may be. And if it is our space and that's our intent, it may be also something that may be exciting and interesting for people to be walking down the street and see this kind of art creative process taking place. And it may be something for the artist to be proud of as well, being Glendale's resident artist for a year. So just an idea. And that's as far as I'll go, as far as making a direct suggestion.
Thank you. The good part is, my colleagues, they said it all, so I don't have to talk now. One thing I want to emphasize is, we have 9,000 square foot of spaces, and there are three stores, so there are approximately like 2,700 of that space is occupied, and we have approximately 6,000 square foot left. I want to see small, very small individual units, if it's possible. Of course, I have to check how the depth is and how the distance is on the Artsakh Street, so that will decide how big the stores can be. But definitely, I want to see smaller individual units, that more stores will be there. It's not going to be like three more, but probably five to seven more stores down there. And I want to see in there that rotating music has been said here, and all in favor of it, not inside this unit, but on Artsakh Street, because now we're going to have wider space because we'll be one-way street, right? So, so we have more space to invite music bands on rotating bases, different groups to come from different countries probably, or music from different countries. I would like to see that. And mostly, there should be food stores there, because if there are food stores there, people, they eat and spend more time. Otherwise, they come, they walk, and they're going to leave quick. So if we want them to stay there, spend some time, and hang around, definitely positively, I want to see food stores there. And I, basically, I am in favor of whatever has been said here, and art gallery, probably, small art galleries, to see in there, to keep people, there's something to go and see. And as I said, if it's smaller stores, everybody will find something to spend some time there. If we make it only like two big places, and let's do the best we can do, some they come and they will be interested, they will spend lots of time, but mostly, they come and leave. So that's why we have to create a place that every individual, every person can, can find something which will be interesting to that person to stay in that street. So that's my idea. But now from our city attorney, we have three alternatives and suggestions. So what do we do now?
Mr. Mayor, so one of, one of the options is to, or one of the, the first items to direct staff on the, on the direction. And so I think what we heard was support for the staff recommendations. And then the second item is whether or not to do the pop-up program. So those are the two items before you.
So, do I call for a motion for this item now?
You say pop-up program? So it's a pop-up program and give direction to staff regarding the general
Correct.
findings in the report?
Correct.
Has there been enough discussion where you know where our direction is?
Direction?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, you, you gave many great ideas, and in addition to that, yes, there was.
You're just saying that, yeah.
Yeah, so the direction was very helpful, and, you know, point taken as well as, you know, punching up some of the ideas, and certainly engaging brokerage community and, and other folks too, to continue to get some ideas. So yes, we, we got great feedback, and I think some direction too regarding the pilot program. And we just need a motion?
Correct, on both.
So may I call for a, I'm sorry, one second. So after we finish the discussion, I will call for road call?
Well, you would need a motion on, and then a second, after the, after the discussion.
Yeah, after the comments, I mean. Okay, Ms. Devine?
I, I will move the, the items, one and two.
One?
A and B.
And A and B, right? A and B.
The strategy and the short-term pop-up.
Yeah, A and B.
Yes.
Okay. May I, all right, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Najarian, second from Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe Mr. Bratman has a question or a comment.
Okay, Mr. Bratman?
Yeah, I was just trying to get in something before we vote. So I just, I do want to emphasize again, working that's not in asylum. again, working this not in a silo, but, but working with Arts and Culture or the Arts and Culture Community. And, and I believe the Arts and Culture Commission maybe has been briefed on this, but I don't think they've given input or been involved. So I think we really, really, really need to change that approach. And also, when I, I just heard some of the other things from my colleagues. So the idea of connection to Artsoc, the place, I think is really cool. I love that, I mean, this is just one thing, but that little takeout place, Jengalov Hatz, I'm probably messing up the pronunciation, but I understand that's a local Artsoc specialty, so that would, you know, just something that would be like the food of the weekend would be really cool. And, and I don't know what this cryogenic thing is or whatever that, that's all about. But I know when I was in China, there was something that was always very popular where they, Ms. Devine is now covering her face, she doesn't know what I'm going to say. But they had something where you put, you have these little pools and you put your feet in and the little fish that eat the dead skin off of your feet. So we could think about that too, okay?
Roll call?
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brothman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Pusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
A German?
Okay.
Move to a German?
Okay, do I have a second? May I have a, okay. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 3:17 PM. Thank you.